Followed by a customer service group and the administration. So those 27 that were listed on the previous page have been split into these three groups. And you'll see that by looking at just the number of tasks, that about 37% of them fall in the data entry maintenance group, 30% in the customer service group, and the remainder 33%. So it's a fairly even cut, but still the majority is in the data entry group. So the next thing we did is we looked at volumes, how many of these tasks were done on an average month. We didn't do a very detailed time study, relied basically on Summer's experience and what she'd done in the past. And so when we took a look at that, we came up with about 51% of those volumes of things that she does that are part of these 27 tasks represent about 50... The data entry maintenance group represents about 51% of those volumes compared to about 21% in customer service and about 28 in administration. So then we took the next step and the final step in terms of looking at the variables, we looked at the time required to do those number of tasks. And I didn't include either the volumes individually or the time required just for simplicity's sake, but if anyone's interested in looking at those numbers, I certainly can share them with you. But in looking at it from this slice, about 45% of the time required fell to those tasks that were in the data entry in the maintenance category, followed by 35 in the customer service. And you really hope that from an administrative standpoint, most of that time or the least amount of time would be spent, and that's exactly how it fell out. The next chart is really confusing, and I know you guys can't read this.
[laughing]
But if you...
That looks impressive.
If you go and look at the packet...
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet. But I'll briefly just real quickly tell you what it is since you can't read it. I love this. What I tried to portray here was a comparison of the volumes and the time required. So the left-hand axis is, and there's four color codes at the bottom, just simply to be able to make it more readable, represents the monthly volumes. So 1 to 250, 250 represent the highest number of volumes per task. All right? And the right-hand axis represents the number of minutes required to do that number of tasks. And I tried to group the 27 tasks, and you can see those listed down at the bottom if you turn the page to read them. But what it showed was that, for example, generating utility bills, inputting water meter readings, the first two, anyway, had the highest number of volumes. And the highest time required were involved with managing the code enforcement process, setting up inspection fees and so forth. So you guys can take a look at it. It's just interesting information to look and see what the differences are. So on the next page, on page eight, we took those 27 tasks, we went through a ranking one through five to try to place a value to get to an overall rating. And the five variables I used were importance, difficulty, skill, volume, as we've talked about, excuse me, and then time required. And you can see how the ratings fall out. On the chart here, I just put a cut line about on the total of 15 to try to show that 60% of her tasks really fall in the top tier between an overall 24 and a 15. If you move that down to where the cutoff was at 11, then it becomes more of a 70/30 split instead of a 60/40 split. But you'll also note, if you haven't noticed already, that those 60 or certainly the 70% are tasks that are critical to the operational capital. A lot... The administrative that fall down near the bottom are certainly important, but they're not quite as important in terms of generating bills, making bank deposits, providing billing permits and so on and so forth. So on the next page shows just a split, a comparison, a pie chart of the tasks as their overall ratings fell out. So the 20.7 was the average rating, overall rating, for all of the tasks in the data maintenance category. And again, this is something where you'd want this to fall out this way so that the highest ratings were in that generally computer, data entry, revenue generation, billing categories, followed by customer service, which is always important, and lastly by administration at almost 9%. So on the next page, I portrayed a summary of basically what we talked about as far as the percentile tasks, volumes, time required, and so on. And from that, these are my key conclusions. First of all, the position handles a lot of tasks, and they're significant, and they're important, critically important, to the city. And the five criteria, either 60 to 70% receive the highest ratings, obviously again depending on where we make that cutoff. We talked about the three groupings, and interesting enough, about 80% of the task volumes involve the two of the three groupings that I think are certainly the most critical, and that is the data entry and customer service aspect of her job. And then about 80% of the time, her time, is also dedicated to those two same, two groupings. So if you take literally those estimated volumes and estimated time required, it equates out to about 66 hours per month required to do all of that work. That's in a perfect environment where you do one thing after the other. It's 100% efficiency, which you know is not the way the world works. And in our small-town environment, obviously, she's pulled very quickly in multiple directions, so it's not a perfect world. So we had, her hours had been about 96 hours a month, which is eight hours of three days. And we recently, I don't remember when we did this, Mark will have to help me, but we recently moved her up to four days a week at eight hours a day for 32 hours a week.
Yeah, we did that about the last two months or so.
Yeah.
Because we were preparing for the audit, and we were dealing with some administrative things, dealing with our re-permitting sewer plant, you know, giving PUC filings. I had Linda running around doing a lot of stuff, Linda was handling a lot of administrative things, and we were having some minor things that we weren't getting to. Things like banners, anybody seen the banners? Got any banners up? Well, that's an example of something that just was not getting done. It was ordered, but we didn't... So I had Summer come online to kind of tidy up. There was a lot of little things that were following through the practice. We got to pick it from the playground, we had ordered, we had the community app, and we had filed that one. There was a lot of little one-off kinds of things that we wanted to clear out.
Okay, so we're almost done. So then, on page 11, slide 11, whatever, I did a little investigation regarding salary and going back to what we talked about a little bit earlier. It's very hard to compare, it's very hard to know what you're comparing if you can't see all of the tasks that are defined in the given job description. So I went out and looked at a couple of online sites, some of you may be familiar with them, payscale.com, glassdoor.com, and looked at the titles here noted in, and you could select the location in Little Elm or Dallas-Fort Worth. So in the payscale findings for an administrative assistant in Little Elm, you can see the target range is the 50th percentile of $14.63 was their target. At Glass Door, I looked at administrative assistant in Dallas-Fort Worth, and their per-hour rate was $17.40 an hour. And then administrative clerical title was $14.71. But then I also called the personnel director for Little Elm, and she was kind enough to be very helpful, and she looked at her billing clerks, which again is not a total, certainly an important and a piece of Summer's jobs, and their pay rate is $14.42 an hour. So the chart at the bottom of the left-hand axis is the per-hour rate, and across the bottom you'll see where currently we're paying Summer's job at $12 an hour. Look at, then we go to the Little Elm's billing clerk is $14.62, and then so on and so forth. And it looks like we're a little below scale. So what I did, the lines vertical represent a 10, 15, 20, 25% increase over her current rate, and the dollars per hour rate decreases reflected to the right of the percentages. $17.40 next to the last part on the right would represent a 45% increase, and the $18 would represent about 50% increase. So on the next page, based on my look at the situation, based on comparable rates, the degree of knowledge, breadth of task, quality of work, positive feedback, I think we should give consideration to some type of the salary increase. And so that's one of the major decisions we need to talk about at some early point in the near future. So from a budgetary standpoint, the chart or the matrix or whatever you want to call it here, shows the percent increase in the far-left column, the per-hour rate that that would represent, the annual salary that that would represent, and the far-right would be the additional salary, annual salary expense based on the percent increase that we might select. So that's just a matter of reference. But the other two things that we need to make a hard decision on as well are how do we do this? First of all, do we do it? And then how do we do it? Do we do it with a hard start date? Do we phase it in? And then secondly, the implementation of whatever we decide to do. Do we backdate it? Do we start it from whenever we make the decision, or do we do it at some point in the future? So those are the three things that I'm going to ask everyone in the council to think about and come back probably in January. And hopefully we can make some hard decisions about those three issues.
Now, let me throw in an accounting issue. So if you look at the biggest number on the page there, is that $4,600? So let's say that we decided to make that position have that pay. There's a $4,600 difference in last year and this year if we did that for the whole year. But Summer's job spans the utility side and the city side. So just utility billing, that's paid for on the utility fund. Billing inspections come out of the city side of the house. She also does the billing for Rocky Point. So part of her pay is paid for by Rocky Point because she's having meter billings for Rocky Point in due to banking, the billing, late notices, which we set out today. So that $4,600 comes from three different buckets, that big number there. The impact from that to the city is less than half. It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a third would actually come out of the city side of the ledger. And that's part of the accounting is making sure that the right things come out of the right buckets. Okay? So that's just, that's how it's allocated is across the different areas.
[inaudible] The annual salary, is that based on 32 hours or is that 40 or what?
Forty.
Forty hours. So she's part-time now, you're going to make the 40?
Yes, let me back up.
No, no. Right now, this, the, she is working four days a week, 32, excuse me, four days a week, 32 hours a week. Okay? So leaving her at that same hourly number of hours...
So you have to make her 40?
No, no, this is, we kind of touched on it earlier, this is part of a study to figure out what is her hours? Is it, when do we need to make, have the discussion about a full-time employee? Because when you took over from part-time to full-time, now you have benefits. And so that's part of understanding what that position does and actually, and kind of teeing up for what I was going to talk about next is what is the job description? This is, we're not looking to get rid of Summer or anything, but if we were to post this job in the newspaper, what would that job posting be? And that's actually what it's... So that's what this whole study has been, is kind of have an audit of what she does to understand what the role is, and also better help us understand for, like what Mark described, hey, there was an uptick in things, and there's more effort, so she's up to 32 hours, that'll probably wind down, which will be back to 24 hours a week or so.
How many hours are considered legally full-time? Is there like a, was it?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two. For benefits, yeah.
So do we have to provide her benefits if she works 32 hours? Do we have to provide her benefits if she's working 32 hours?
She averages 32 hours for the year.
For the year.
Obamacare, I may find what happens in the short run is 30, it's according to the order is 32. Yeah. I mean, here's, this is part of a bigger, part of the process we're trying to do here is that, is that the town, like Linda's position, Summer's position, the town's history, it's always been ad hoc. Somebody knew somebody, or this person was over there, this person was a work-study student, so let's hire them because they're at Little Elm. It's never been a real position. So part of what we're trying to do is, if Linda left and we needed another city secretary, then we want to even hire someone of Linda's caliber. So we have a benefits package, it's competitive, we have a 401K plan. So I am confident that if Linda left, we would, we deserve to have somebody that good. We deserve that. We're not going to hire somebody's aunt who needs a job, who's staying home while the kids are in school. We're not doing that ever again. So part of now Summer's position is, we need to have that next position. And so let's lay out exactly what that is. So if Summer decides, I'm going to go back to college and I'm leaving, you know what? No problem. We're growing up, and we can advertise for, this is the payscale, these are the duties, this is what we're going to pay you, and we can hire somebody to do that job. Not just, does anybody have a kid that's home for the summer from college that wants to make a few bucks? That's the old way of doing it. We can't do that anymore. We gotta grow up and have a management structure that's modern. And so, you know, this is really important. And I think, you know, I'm jumping ahead of here, but the idea is, if the position is this much, and this is what they are in their full-time, then if she's utilized at 60% right now, then she gets 60%, she gets that hourly rate for 60% of the time. As we get bigger, 10 more houses, 20 more inspectors, as the job grows, she gets more utilization into that job, but we pin down the job itself.
How much time did you work for this?
Yeah.
This is impressive. It looked like you were really impressed.
It was a lot of work. I would rely on my experience. Let me finish up, and then we can, we can go on. The last two pages are a draft job description, and I appreciate any input on this. It defines the job description itself, it lists the education requirements, experience. Obviously, there's no supervisory requirement for the job. We've given the job the title of utility billing and billing services coordinator. We thought that was the best selection to encompass the major task of her job. And then listed on the last page are qualifications, where it's located, job classification, it could be the part-time, full-time, salary range, that's obviously could change, would change based on our decisions in January. And then certainly if it does become a full-time job, then we would provide a 401K matching medical coverage. So I encourage you guys to take a look at it, you know, we can have some further discussion on this.
Is it for a monthly match? Do you match 50%?
Actually, you match 100%.
Oh my God. I'm only calling for you.
Only the first 5%.
But it's, yeah, it's 100% matches up to a certain percentage of the pay.
Okay.
So 50% match is only half of what you put in up to a, so it's certainly not, most everybody has a 100% match.
A lot of these writing the higher hats and shit there. But we're up to a ship.
But again, I think this is an important step in that, you know, if you look at our hierarchy, look at our, you know, chart of the city, there's Linda, and then there's all the boxes. That's it. So we have to start getting the town management set up so that, you know, when somebody else is sitting on this side of the desk, the town is still running. This side of that doorway can change. We want the other side of the door to still be functioning. We want the town to keep functioning regardless of what happens on this side of the desk. So it's really setting up the structure that, you know, we leave it in good hands, that we can always hire people that will keep the town running for. That's kind of the way I view this.
I didn't ask whether anybody had any questions. I don't know how we're doing on time, but...
So just to clarify, this is to define the position. It's not about Summer. It's not about Summer the person. It's analyze Summer's work, put together the information.
Right.
It's the job description, it's putting it so that we can budget off it within reason, you know, fix it pretty well. I think it's, I think it's a job well done. We probably need to read in more detail. I haven't read through the whole thing once, but we'll bring some recommendations in.
Good. I appreciate you breaking this up ahead of time, well ahead of budget somehow as something to consider, I mean, I think, looking at the one slide here, this is where not being competitive in the market.
And this is a pretty logical genesis. I mean, we hired Summer two and a half years ago, I think. So about two and a half years ago, we hired her, and then what happened was about a year ago, almost a year ago, I think exactly, we made her an employee. She's a part-time employee with no benefits, but, so we picked up her social security. That was the advantage was basically she doesn't have, she didn't have to pay both sides of social security. So about a year ago, instead of a raise, we picked up social security for her, and we made her an employee, which was much better for her because for, we actually withhold her from the pay now and everything. You know, I don't know if I can work as an independent contractor at 20 years old, and as I'm getting paid, set aside the money, make quarterly tax payments and social security. As a 20-year-old, I don't know that I would have that kind of discipline. So I think it worked out well making her an employee, a part-time employee. We made that switch a year ago. So this is kind of the next genesis, is to now say, okay, let's now define the position, let's get the pay, let's do a pay study and see where are we. And Ed did a great job of keeping that up. And it's just part of the natural evaluation, I think, to begin to line up the management side of the apps, the operating side, you know. So I think that, I think that was a good job.
Thank you.
All right. And again, that's just a discussion item, so we'll come back in January and hopefully pin down some numbers. Next up is energy conservation code, 2015 version, Clint.
Yeah, so hopefully everyone had a chance to read the memo here. This was just a mess. Had we caught it earlier than the last time we adopted the energy code, we would have adopted this amendment. But the state of Texas recently, and the enforcement period started on September 1st, so the state of Texas adopted the 2015 Energy Code with these particular amendments. And so because the state trumps us, we have to follow it soon. So our, our energy code that we currently have adopted is not in compliance with the state, so really all of, all of what we're doing here is bringing our code exactly in line with what the state is. So again, it was, had I known it, it was brought to me late, and I found it late, so had we known about it, we would have done it last month or the month before, had we been the codes.
Well, I know that you asked, so, I, redoing the codes, we asked Stephen, attorney chain, do we need to up, instead of 12 codes, we move to 16s or all that? I think you've got to say that's our idea, just no, just leave the codes where they're at.
Yeah, and actually, we're kind of ahead of a lot of other municipalities, they haven't adopted it yet.
I don't think Prosper has yet.
No, so we're, there's actually a lot of people kind of caught behind the card.
So is this saying that when new homes are built, that they have to meet this level of...
So what happened here, there's actually, this house bill, essentially the 2015 Energy Code actually has stricter requirements than what the state has adopted.
For instantly?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what the state has done is a compromise between the code and an agreement with the builders' association that they'll tier in. But essentially, they're still well above what the 2015 code actually is. But we can't, we could, we could adopt the 2015 as is, first builder walks in the door and says, oh, just want to see, we just don't, so we just have to follow the stuff.
Energy of all the codes, residential code, international, all the codes with gas code, all these things, the legislature stays out of all of them. They don't, they don't adopt something on residential homes. They don't do that. The one where they get involved is energy efficiency, is the energy code, the efficiency, the R thing, how tight a house is. That's the one area where they meddle. So they meddled and changed it. So that's why we have to follow them, because now that's a state law, so we have to follow them because they trump us. But it's the only code where they've got, they stay out of all the other ones, but this is what kind of caused us, is there's a legislature change, not the international code guys. They didn't change it, the legislature did. So that was kind of the, that's why it comes to a weird routing. It's a...
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion with, doc.
Energy conservation.
I was trying to get to it where you could see it.
Okay, I'm not sure to adopt the energy conservation code. Gary House, the second, always in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Clint, appreciate you catching that. We're good there. All right, next up is minutes. I read through the minutes, they look good to me. Ed wasn't here?
No, they were good.
Okay. They look good to me. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, they all look good. Motion?
My motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2016.
All right, I have a motion. Ray second it, always in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. All right. That's that. Next up, we are going to executive session, recess, yep.
Under counsel and staff comments, I want to thank Daryl and Jamie and Dan and you for all the help you gave us.
You're the one that ran it, you're the one that gets the ads. We should organize it again.
Well, you kept, kept all the hang open. I had a lot of positive comments from people, and I really appreciate it.
It was a good time, everybody was pretty happy. Now, you know, trailers without railies are psychologically, they just won't do it. Psychology, I don't know what the deal is with that.
That's how I can get out of every year.
Won't get on a trailer and not be signed.
Just look at the muscles on that guy, looked at the hay up to two stars. You know, I got down for him, how hard I was breathing when I...
Ah, it's good, it was good. It was a lot of fun. It's always a great...
Good way, actually.
Okay, so we are going to recess in the executive session, compliance with 551071, Texas Department of Customs and Foreign Litigation, Lakeville versus Harry, Texas Department Code with Customs and Foreign Litigation matter, Attorney Governor of the Body in Texas, different roles, very complex, chapter received legal advice, 551072, government code deliberation about real property, 551087, Texas Department of Economic Development.
We have the same problem here, right?
What?
The first one says we're going to consult with our attorney, and that's why we're going to executive session.
Yep.
So, you know, double-check again, and we read the code. You can't go and discuss a legal matter without a town attorney if he's not present.
That's right.
We can do the other things. We can do the government code deliberation.
We can talk about any legal stuff we want.
No.
Yes. I can talk about, without the attorney, I can discuss legal stuff.
So, so no.
Okay. Again, it's fine. Okay, let's go. Executive session now.
When you guys are gone.
We're going to go to executive session. Guys, we're probably not going to do anything after, see any help requested, I think, okay? Okay. So we're going to have an executive session now. You're going to stay or are you going to go?
Staying.
Going.
Yeah.
You don't have to say anything.
You don't have to say anything.
So you got it, are you going to stay or are you going to go?
Stay.
Go.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
I thought you can stay for the executive.
We stay for a while. We're not going to, there's not a...